Hey, I'd like to start the, uh, let's see, Tuesday, September fourteenth meeting of the Public Works Committee. And, uh, we'll start with a roll call. Uh, let's see, we have Jenny Woo.
Jenny Woo, council here.
Okay, and Jeff Langham?
Yes, here.
And, uh, let's see, Tony Pisaki?
I am here.
And Aaron Host?
Here.
And Maureen Whitaker?
Here.
Okay, so we're all here except for Jim, who is stuck in traffic. Uh, approval of the minutes of the June fifteenth meeting, if we can have a motion, Jenny, to approve those?
I'm happy to approve the minutes of June, um, I moved to approve the minutes of June fifteenth.
Great, and now second, and, uh, do we, uh, therefore we have a motion to, uh, approve those minutes and that seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fantastic. Old business, we got none, new business, we're right up to the Olympic Drive right turn lane extension at Point Fosdick. And I don't know who's going to lead that discussion, Jeff, is that you or is that Aaron?
Um, well, I'll let Aaron start off, I mean, I prepared the memo, but it was, uh, yeah, I'll let Aaron take this one.
Okay.
Sure, yeah, thank you, um, I'll just, I'll read through some of the memo here that Jeff prepared, then I've got some other talking points as well, so. In twenty sixteen, as required by development agreement, the city worked collaboratively with the developer of the Fred Meyer complex along Point Fosdick Drive to perform more multiple corridor improvements. These improvements included creating a right turn lane along the eastbound Olympic Drive to southbound Point Fosdick Drive and roadway improvements along Point Fosdick Drive north of Olympic Drive to the west end of Fifty-Sixth Street. With the recent redevelopment of a grocer in the Harbor Plaza Shopping Center south of Olympic Drive, there's a renewed interest by some to improve access in and out of Harbor Plaza's Western Lee driveway. The city has worked with the owner of Harbor Plaza Shopping Center to obtain the necessary right of way for future improvements, and these improvements have been identified in the city's twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-seven tip. Um, so moving on to some of the points, uh, that I jotted down here, so. And some of these, I, I kinda just went through some ideas, um, just kinda taking a guess at what might be of interest to council or Public Works Committee tonight, so. Um, a TIA, um, or a TCRC, which is a transportation reservation certificate, was not required of Metropolitan Market because they were able to take credit for the existing supermarket trips from the main and vine. Um, therefore, the proposed use generates zero net new trips, um, which is what we track with our concurrency code and with our concurrency model. Um, and that's per nineteen ten zero zero four. Um, frontage improvements were also not required, um, on Olympic Drive due to the fact that the Olympic Drive frontage is currently adequate. Also, the city will be relocating the Olympic Drive curb line and sidewalks with TIP Project Number Ten, which is the extension of the Olympic Drive right turn lane. Um, however, as I had mentioned previously from Jeff's memo, we were able to negotiate with the developer, and they've dedicated ten feet of right of way to allow the city to construct TIP Project Number Ten, um, when that time comes, and just as a, as a reminder to everybody, I know the TIP's kind of a, a big, the report's a big thing to look at, but that project is currently slated on the TIP for PE preliminary engineering, so design and construction in twenty twenty-three. Um, there was not an access to require the developer to make the actual improvement to the Olympic Drive Point Fosdick right turn lane extension improvements for two reasons. One reason is, um, as I mentioned on that first talking point, is that the developer will contribute zero net new trips to the city's transportation network because of how, um, our concurrency code is written and because of how we track our city's, uh, concurrency model.
So just as a follow-up on that comment is that if the developer or someone in that shopping center were to redevelop or add new square footage to the development that did add new trips, we could then have them through CPO or other processes provide a pro rata share payment to the city for this capital project, so. It wouldn't necessarily be one hundred percent of the capital project cost, whatever that is, but it'd be a, a portion of that because of the new trips that they've added. So that is one way we could do it now, especially since this project is on our TIP. They can pay for some of their improvements through that manner, or they could pay, um, their impact fees could credit against that project itself, is the way the code is written.
I, I had a question, the, the, the original extension of the right-hand turn, the, the right-hand, the extra right-hand turn lane, where we bought the property next to the gas station. Um, I, I thought the big issue there was not ingress egress to the shopping center, but it was backup of traffic on Olympic Drive, that's why we did it, I think. And I must admit, I struggled a little bit with this, I, I don't understand how extending that thing down there improves ingress egress to the, uh, shopping center. That's what I was struggling with, oh, great, great idea, it, and not for the wrong reason. What?
Oh, it improves it, doesn't it, because, because you won't be able to turn, but if you extend it down there, then you won't be able to try to come out of that shopping center and turn left. Is that my understanding?
Yeah.
I, I don't believe so, Jenny, I think that, um, i- if there's no cars stacked up in that right-hand turn lane, people can still make that left, I believe the only way, if we want to eliminate left-hand turns out of that, uh, ingress egress brought, we need to put a curb.
Well.
Similar to what's up at Albertson's.
Of course, yeah. And I think that's where Aaron was going with this, is it, but th- there is a direct correlation to that right-hand turn lane being extended along the frontage of Harbor Plaza to the restrictions that the city would, the city would impose for left-hand turns.
Okay.
And so, um, jumping ahead from where Aaron was going with this, but absolutely, at the point the city decides to, or a development triggers additional need for additional capacity at the Point Fosdick Olympic intersection, like Councilmember Heim said, and that right turn lane needs to be extended to mitigate, to provide the additional capacity, we would then restrict right, or sorry, left-hand turns and place a, what we call a C-curb out in the middle of the two-way left turn lane to enforce that no-left-turn restriction.
Okay.
Yeah, does that make sense? But, and it, there's a number of reasons why that we would have no left-turn restriction in there, but we don't need to go into that here, but that's, that's, that's what we would be doing.
I guess somewhere along the line, we, we'll make that perfectly clear to everybody, I, I've seen at least one email where somebody was touting the, the extension, and it was almost like, oh, now I'll be able to make a left-handed turn out there, okay? And which I struggled with at the time, um, and I, I kinda like, no, I don't think that's what that's gonna do for you.
Well, maybe, maybe we brief or revise update, uh, next year when we do the TIP to define the descrip, including the description that we're going to, at that same point, restrict left in, left out from that entrance.
Okay.
I think that's what I hear from citizens, is the concern over that left turn, over the left, the ability to turn left with traffic speeding along there, of course, you know, that's their right to, that's their right, that's their right to turn left, but, uh, that's what they have is the ability right now, and it doesn't seem like a safe idea to me, and it does constrict movement in those lanes, but, but we're not planning on doing anything until, until there is a call for the confusion at the, at the actual intersection of Point Fosdick and Olympic, is that what I'm hearing, we're not gonna be proactive on this?
So the, the closest driveway to Point Fosdick, we did have the developer install signage and striping. I understand that vehicles can kinda do whatever they want, but the, the closest driveway to Fosdick, there's at least thermoplastic striping and a sign that says right turn only, so that's what, um, we've done as part of, we've required them to do as part of this developer project. Um, but as Jeff was discussing, we can definitely incorporate full, full, um, red and red out restrictions into the capital project when we, uh, when we get to that point.
And Councilmember Woo, your question I also, I think, is, are we going to wait and do the construction until we have, um, added demand from the shopping center? Um, I don't think that's the case, I think it's up to the city on when to fund the project itself, because it is on our TIP for, uh, preliminary engineering and construction in twenty twenty-three pending funding.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-three is for design, I thought.
It's both design and construction in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and so we already own the right of way, so we don't have to purchase that, and that would have been a large part of this project. Um, do we have any idea of what the cost for extending this lane would be? Or are we gonna wait for the design on that?
Yeah, and this is just real preliminary, but I'm pulling up the TIP right now, um, including PE and construction, we have a six ninety, um, that, that's what we have in the TIP, um, until we get, uh, engineer's estimate, you know, that could be plus or, seems a little bit high to me, but.
Six hundred and ninety thousand?
Yeah.
Just for the slip lane?
Yeah.
Yeah, I forget how long that is, but it's surprisingly long.
Two thousand four economics.
Two hundred and sixty feet approximately, so, yeah, it involves demoing a bunch of sidewalk, moving the curb line, um, and then what, I know that when we, um, did the original right turn lane, this extension project, we discovered, uh, underground wall in that location that ended up costing the city a bunch of money and, and change orders, so. I think we put a little bit of buffer in there for unanticipated, uh, finding unanticipated structures underground.
There's no utility relocates to do though, right?
No, we don't anticipate any.
We shouldn't have to pay for those if there are.
Are there any light posts, poles that need to be moved?
On that up right now as well.
And Councilmember Franch, you had a question, I think.
Yes, um, is there any, uh, prohibition or any regulation that would not allow us to put in that, uh, curb before twenty twenty-three?
No, I, I don't believe so, I mean, we can, we control, or, oh, you said before twenty twenty-three, thank you, um.
Yeah, I, I, we have the ability to do that, since it's in our right of way and we can control access, it just might be um, more difficult to explain to the property owner and the public, but we have the right to do that now, we've talked about doing that in the past.
Well, I, I mean, I understand Councilmember Woo's concern, I mean, it is, i- it can be a dangerous situation, people taking a left out of there at certain times, other times it's free and clear. I think that, uh, you know, if, I, I don't know, i- if Councilmember Woo wanted it to move this forward through prior to twenty twenty-three, I, that was my main question of whether or not we could, did you, what did you call that, a C, what?
C-curb.
A C-curb, um, I'm assuming that would be fairly inexpensive.
Yes, it's some signing, some striping and some C-curb, yeah.
Now, I don't know how the developer would feel about that, uh, you know, a- and I don't know really what effect that would have on traffic dumping on, because if you couldn't take a left out of there, anybody that was wanted to head westbound on Olympic would have to go all the way, you know, they'd have to go back by shocks to the stoplight, and then take a left out of that particular ingress egress point, and then start stacking up at, uh, Olympic left turn lane.
Yeah. Yep.
So there are some, uh, there's some things, it's, it's not, not just a simple thing, I mean, there's some, I, I believe that there are some competing things that are going on there.
So is there any way to get a model of what it would look like, uh, uh, of actually what it would mean to, if we had the C-curb, and if people were forced to go down and come around? Do we have, I mean, that, I mean, that is something, there's, there's two different things there, and, and we, as we get more people coming from, from Hunt and Scancy coming over there to shop, and from that, uh, those other areas coming in there to shop, that's gonna be a busy roadway, and yet, if they come to shop there, they have to go back somehow, and so maybe, what, what is that gonna do to Point Fosdick?
Yeah, um, Councilmember Franch, and Woo, you're definitely correct that, um, this is something that, um, Councilmember Franch, you mentioned that the vehicles that, you know, would be taking a, a left out of there to go down Olympic are gonna now be stacking up at the left turn pocket on Point Fosdick, yeah, um, completely correct, so yeah, this is something, um, that we could take a look at once Metropolitan Market is online, um, we, we have TSI onboard for small transportation-related studies such as, as this would likely be, so we could do some counts of this intersection, and they could model what it would look like to, to restrict movements at, um, at both of these driveways, or one of them, or none of them, and, and compare what that would do to the intersection.
I, I'd like to see that myself.
Uh, Jeff, I, I, is there a, the, the entrance that's right next to the Chevron driveway, that ingress egress point into that Olympic Plaza, whatever that shopping center's called? Uh, i- is there a prohibition, I, is there a C-curb there now, I can't really remember, coming out of that smaller?
Yes, 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 there is, there's a C-curb, uh, to separate westbound traffic from eastbound traffic, it's on the left side of the left turn lane heading east.
Okay.
Do you want, I have it up on my screen with Google Street View if you want to see it.
Yeah, you might as well.
Can you see, can you see that, okay?
Yeah, but that, that C-curb looks like it's short of that intersection that's, your pointer was that, yeah.
Yeah, that's where, and I, I think this might be changed, this Google Street View, let's see, I don't know if they have imagery date, yeah, see imagery date down here, September twenty eighteen, I think it has changed, I think, like Aaron said, don't, Aaron, didn't you say they have a right turn only and a different, um?
Yeah, they, they installed a right turn only sign and a right turn only arrow, but I, I don't know, Jeff, if that C-curb actually is extended far enough to restrict left turn movements out of there, I, I don't recall it.
Yeah, I don't think it was, I think it was only markings and street signs.
No, it's not, because I've gone that way.
Yeah, people come out of there all the time from that other shopping center on the other side and cross over those, yeah.
Yeah.
I see that often.
That, that is the most critical of the two driveways, being that it's closest to the intersection, so, yeah, I mean, if, if we were gonna do one, that would be the driveway to restrict access entirely to right in, right out, but, um.
Yeah, and just remember, I mean, part of that modeling is going to then have to identify how many more trips will not only go through that Point Fosdick Olympic intersection, because they won't be going out the westerly shopping center entrance to turn left, but it'll also redirect trips that want to go into the shopping center from Olympic Drive, because they cannot turn left to go in there. They'll have to go through the left turn lane to turn south on to Point Fosdick. So we all know what that does, especially around the holidays, and how that backs up across the highway, across the overpass, so. It's going to have an impact, for sure, and we have, we'll have to model that.
Well, I, I can, um, empathize with Councilmember Woo's concerns here. For me personally, it's kinda like the buyer beware, you know, if you're gonna wanna take the chance of making a left-hand turn out of there, um, you know, so be it, but, um, I, I think before we block it off, we definitely need to do, um, some kind of study on what that's gonna do to Point Fosdick and the left turn lanes.
Totally, I mean, totally agree with that.
That would be part of the TSI study?
Yeah, definitely, and I could, uh, if I could add a little bit to that study, I mean, we, it, it, the study could also show, um, the benefit of extending this right turn pocket, the two hundred and fifty feet that we proposed, because, I mean, the whole purpose of, of that project is that so during the peak hour when vehicles are, are stacked up beyond, um, where that current right turn pocket extends to, that, that vehicle is wanting to take a ride on to Fosdick can now enter that lane two hundred and fifty feet further back and clear out the queue, so.
Yeah.
Um, it could take a look at that as well.
That'd be good.
So it sounds like we've got agreement on going forward then with this, and then, and the study, uh, coming up after the, um, store is open, okay, and we know exactly what we're looking at, and, uh, and two thousand twenty-three is still the, or two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-three, yeah, is the target for design and construction of the extension, correct?
Yep.
Would, would the study be done in twenty-two, or are we gonna wait until twenty-three to do the study as well?
Yeah, and, uh, maybe I'll defer to Jeff, but I think we could do that, we're.
If we're going to try and hit the construction timeline in twenty twenty-three, we need to do the study in, at some point in twenty twenty-two. Now, we have, uh, funds typically available, I don't know specifically if it's called out, but, uh, for, for doing this type of traffic modeling with TSI, that is non, not directly related to a private development, so, we could do that, um.
First quarter next year?
Or, or, yeah, middle of next year, but we need to make sure that we have that on our to-do list, because, of course, we're.
Would we even need to do the study? I mean, the only reason I would see the need to do the study if was we're gonna put that C-curb in, and change the traffic pattern.
Well, if we put that, if we extend that right turn lane, we will be putting in that C-curb and changing the traffic pattern. We cannot, in my professional opinion, extend that right turn lane, add another lane, add longer distance for vehicles to cross traffic, add another two, three points of conflict across there, and not put that C-curb in, it's, it's, it's going to add too many accidents.
Do we have accident data for that area?
We do, it's probably most relevant to have accident data pulled from the years when the grocery store was open, but we do have that, we have continuous ongoing accident data from our police department and the state patrol.
And does that take much staff time if, for the report, for the study, that's just TSI?
Well, yeah, we have to coordinate that with them and set some parameters on that, and then we would have to get back to the Public Works Committee and possibly the full city council, it would take some time, but, you know, it's not a huge lift.
Okay. I, I, I think it's worthwhile taking a look at that, uh, next year.
All right, uh, I, once again, I, I apologize for, uh, speaking, talking about traffic, uh, I was, uh, unfortunately held up for many cycles at the Willatch Drive, uh, interchange, so. Thank you for your, oh, for your patience. You're, you're eastbound, no doubt, on sixteen. No, I, I was, uh, yeah, I was eastbound, exactly. Eastbound, and everybody pulls, no matter what the color of the light is, they pull, or the people on Willatch keep running coming and just jam up the whole thing, I've been in that numerous times the past week. Uh, that is a real mess we've got there, uh, and by the way, the, the, uh, the work downtown, it just exacerbated. E- everybody is, wants to get across there, and in fact, I've seen the traffic backed up onto sixteen quite a ways, uh, from that thing. But that's another topic. Yeah, okay, well, uh, thank you guys for that, um, if that's all on that subject, I guess we'll move on to the Cedar Crest water system, August twenty twenty-one incident.
Yes, but before I jump in, Mo, were you gonna say something?
I just wanted to be clear on the recommendation, so the recommendation was to do a, a traffic modeling study in twenty twenty-two after Met Market is open?
Should be, yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. And thank you, Aaron, appreciate your input on this.
A good day, everyone.
Thanks.
Karen.
Thank you.
All right, uh, yes, so, talking about Washington Water, uh, Cedar Crest area. Um, as noted in the memo, there were, uh, there were some issues with Washington Water providing, uh, water service to its customers, uh, at the end of July, first part of August. Um, in talking to the operations manager, uh, they were having some pumping issues, uh, some operational issues, I was gonna bring up a map of actually showing where the area is that we're talking about, because it's a little convoluted on who serves water, just to, like, it is often throughout the city of Gig Harbor, a patchwork quilt of water purveyors throughout, so, let me share my screen here. Okay, so this is our GIS system showing water purveyors across the city. This orangish color is City of Gig Harbor, so we serve all of this area, we serve Seventy-Second Street Platte, we serve the, all of the new houses in the courtyards at Scancy Project, but not at Bellicera. Red is Washington Water, blue is an independent water purveyor, that, that's just the water purveyor for the church, they provide their own water. Um, and, but I also wanna click.
Excuse me, Jeff, so that red, right, well, that red line that's below the black box there, is that, uh, Hunt Street?
Yes, this red line, well, Hunt Street is right here, this red line is along Hunt Street, but it's actually city limits.
Yeah, okay, I just, I just wanted to get my bearings of, of.
Yep.
Where we are here.
And I can turn it off if, if you want to see the, uh, the map without the lines.
Right, it's fine, it's fine, I just wanted to get my bearings, that's all.
Sure, okay, so let me click on something here, and you're gonna see this, this is actually, there's multiple water systems that are operated and owned by Washington Water here, so here's one. You see that blue line around there? So this is Washington Water's Cedar Crest water system, now I'm gonna go over here. Oh, come on, GIS, there. Um, this is Washington Water System, but it's not Cedar Crest, it says unidentified, we just don't have the data on that, but it's a separate water system that is, that both of these water systems are owned and operated by Washington Water.
What is the black?
Like right here?
Yeah, trees.
Uh, those are, yeah, these are actual trees, it's just, it's a, it's, it's a property line that is not identified by the county as being served by a water purveyor, and the reason it doesn't is because this, it's kind of a, a little bit of an intricacy here, this is the Harborview Church. This parcel is the parcel on which their building is located, and this parcel over here is where their parking lot and open space tract is. It technically doesn't have a water purveyor associated, but if push came to shove, it would be the same, I think it's called Harborview impact curve, and it's actually, it's operated by Peninsula Light Company, so.
The church is operated by Peninsula Light Company?
No, the water system.
Water system.
For the church, so, many of these, uh, places, uh, they, they don't have the expertise to operate a water system that's required by the state, and so they hire Peninsula Light Company to manage and operate the water system.
Okay, thank you.
So, I just wanted to show you that, what, the area we're talking about, um, even though that, that we have multiple water service areas, it's all operated and owned by Washington Water, and they are able to move water across their lines and, uh, supply their customers in different ways, depending on what issues are coming, and what happened was that a well right here, well, yeah, right here, uh, went down, um, and so they were working on that one, this one was already shut down, they have a well here at the corner of Hunt and Willatchit, that's Washington Waters, and then they have two other wells over here on the other side, and so those were providing all of the water, and, um, I really appreciate working with Washington Water, I can tell you though, that they have, their water system doesn't have the fire flow or, or that we do, and typically the, the, uh, capacity that our water system does, and so when they have a well down or two down, they have a lot more impacts on their water system. Though, they have told me that even though the water pressure was low for a day or two, whenever that, that was happening, they were meeting their minimum requirements for flows and pressures.
What, so, who, who is, who keeps track of that? What so who who is who keeps track of that?
Uh, who keeps track of what specifically?
Flow, the the pressure, the flow.
Well, that's a requirement by the State Department of Health.
Okay.
Um, and they are supposed to make sure that they're always meeting that. It's it's. Minimum pressures during non-fire flows of thirty P S I. During a fire event where fire flows are occurring, the minimum pressure has to be twenty P S I to each property line.
And Jeff, they monitor that through their status system and report that data to the state, right?
Yes, they do. That's part of their process is through.
Same thing.
And how often does it get reported?
Um, I don't, I don't know. I I it's um. There's an annual report they have to provide, um, though I don't know if that's where it is that that they. Or it might be, well, yeah, I think it's just an annual report.
Well, if if they end up having a problem that they uh find out about, uh, they do have to let the state know about that, but then they have to take action to uh remediate that. Uh, problem as soon as they possibly can. So if their pressures drop, then they have to figure out how to deal with that, but they have to tell the state.
Yes.
So we have, how many water companies do we have serving our citizens?
A lot.
Uh, yeah, it's probably, I mean, I can zoom out. You can see the numbers, but it's probably in the order of ten.
And we really don't have any ability to know what their uh situation is with regards to flow or capacity. Is that correct?
Correct. That's not, we we don't manage or regulate that at all for any other water purveyor other than ourselves. And for example, our public work standards only apply to for water systems only apply to our water system.
I I I don't know how far this issue got uh on on the example here, but typically they will start. Advising customers of certain things, for example, uh alternating days to water your lawn during certain periods of time is one of my favorites. Uh, and I think we've all been through one of those where they have a low pressure situation and they will typically go after. By the way, low pressure typically during peak usage times, which for irrigation system just happens to be usually about six to nine in the morning. Is is when it really hits. And uh, so that's, I think that precedes a lot of the. Or let's say prevents this thing from getting really bad, okay, is limit use amongst the customers for short period of time.
Yeah, and so, yeah, there's, there's, there's a couple of different warnings they can give and notices they can give. That is one of them. Alternate or just no watering.
Yeah.
Of no irrigation use, or they can say, depending on how low the pressure might have gotten, if it got below a certain pressure. And or if there were to be zero pressure at some point, they could do a boil water notice.
So why is this before us today, Jeff?
Uh, it was brought forward to my attention and asked by Councilmember Wook to be put on the agenda.
Yeah, I wanted to discuss what 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 the business is and and and. Because these are our citizens that were affected by an outside company, and so I just wanted to know how that works and uh. And is there nothing that we can do to um to make sure we know how much water is available from these other companies for our citizens? In the city of Gig Harbor?
Um, we could. Uh, there, there is the ability to condemn water service areas. Um, I think that would be very challenging to do and probably expensive. Washington Water is a for-profit water company. Um, so they wouldn't give it to us. It would be.
Well, I I mean, the the I I I'm assuming that these people, they know who their water providers are, so um, I I don't really see why this is. The city's business.
So I'm not sure that everybody does know who their water purveyors are. I mean, I got complaints about low water in this area, and so that's why I brought it forward. And maybe, maybe the thing to do is to make sure all our citizens know that it's not the city of Gig Harbor's water.
I I get a water bill from Washington Water.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's.
It's got their name on it, including the the number to call and everything, and I do, by the way. Uh, yeah, I I think there's a little, um, I wouldn't say exaggeration in some of the emails I saw, some of the blogs, but. Yeah, I I think there's some issues there uh that this thing got extended to to possibly uh. Um, future developments is the word I use, future extreme developments, uh, lack of showers, and I don't know what all is in there. So, yeah.
So I know someone who works at the city who lives in Cedar Crest that had issues with this, and I happen to trust what she says very much. And and it was a lack of showers that they had, and and I don't know that it has to do with a development that somebody else was talking about, but but uh, but. Anyway, I just want to make sure that it doesn't have anything to do with any future development.
Yeah, um, i- i- as far as capacity to withdraw water through their pumps, hold water in their reservoirs and distribute it amongst their mains. Um, that really is a Department of State Department of Health regulation that they have to meet. Um, and the only way the city could be involved is if we took it over.
Yeah, I don't think that's something anybody wants.
But Jeff, don't they have to uh at least uh brief the city on their comprehensive plan or their system, system-wide plan every year?
Uh, every time they update it, yes, they do, which is every ten years. We are required to review it, but we can only review it and comment it on based on. City growth patterns, zoning, land use, and whether or not they have the capacity, namely water rights. And a plan to pull water out and distribute it. It's pretty limited.
Correct, and and same thing if it was a governmental water districts.
Yes, same thing.
And so they all pull, everybody pulls from different aquifers. Is that right?
Uh, not necessarily. Uh, there are multiple aquifers. Some of us pull from the same aquifer. Um, my understanding, though, for Cocktine to Ken Andrews is that Washington Water pulls from more shallow aquifers than we do. We pull from much deeper aquifers.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, okay, well, um, that's all I had for that topic, and I think that's all on the agenda.
All right.
So I do have something else I'd like to bring up. Um, and uh, we have a, we have an issue on Harborview Drive. We have a. We have someone with a, an illness in the family. Well, it's a disease in the family. Actually, they're two Parkinson's people who right next door to each other. One of them is serious enough to have a caretaker. When that caretaker is gone and when that gentleman falls. It uh then then the emergency gets calls to pick this gentleman up off the floor. Or if he has other issues to pick him up and take him to the hospital. This this um house is across from Bricks and often there is um. A delivery truck parked in front of their driveway. There is people parking in front of their driveway to pick up, take out from Bricks. And um, this is a real detriment to emergency services getting to this location. Um, and and I think that we have the ability to put a paint a sign on the street, do not block driveway. And and I think that it's, it would not mean that you have to do this. And everybody who asks for do not block driveway unless they're in in a different situation, but I think this is important. I I know that the chief, I I put this forward to um to Jeff before. And and when I got back was that uh if we do this, then we have to do this for everybody who asks a do not block driveway, and it would be expensive. Certainly, surely there's a way that we can help protect people who have a a need for their driveway not being depl- not being blocked. And I I know that this person calls the police when the driveway is blocked, but sometimes when the, well, by the time the. One of the two police officers on duties gets there, you know, it's freed up by then, but this is not a good situation and not a safe situation. So I'm um, I'm asking for some support from um Public Works here to see if if there's any interest in. In trying to figure out a way to get a sign painted there. Bob or Jim?
I think I'd push the enforcement angle first. By the way, I can tell you the time. It's Joe's Produce on Saturday mornings, boy. And by the way, they don't block the the driveway. They block the whole street.
Yeah, they do. They stop in the lane of traffic, yes.
Yeah, they, yeah, they stop everything, and those guys have no shame. I've gotten out of my car to uh. Uh, give them a lecture about blocking traffic to no avail. I mean, these guys are are uh, they're they're a work of art. I I would push, I would push the enforcement angle first. Um, and I know the area you're talking about and uh.
Well, I I I believe I know. The house that Councilmember Wook is is speaking about, and you know, this all goes back to the whole notion of restaurants in Millville and whether or not that was a good idea. I happen to think that it wasn't a good idea. I thought it was gonna bring these negative impacts to the neighborhood. Um, and, you know, I know that i- if it's the people that I'm thinking about, I know that there was. When they first opened, there was a lot of noise complaints and the police did show up, but um, and I I'm I'm for enforcement too, but unfortunately. Unless the police get there before the delivery trucks gone, there is no enforcement. So I I has, and and I don't, Tony uh or Mr. Pasecki, I don't, you're probably not really familiar with this idea, but. Um, I I think it would be a good idea if the city reached out to the operators of Bricks twenty-five to let them know. Uh, in a gentle or forceful manner that, hey, you guys need to have your delivery trucks. They can't be stopping in the road because. They should be going around behind that restaurant into Murphy's Landing Parking Lot to do all of their deliveries, so uh. I I I I think that maybe giving them a friendly reminder that, hey, there's some problems going on here and uh. Could you please take care of it and see if that helps?
We could certainly do that. That's that's easy.
And and not only with the delivery trucks, but with people stopping and blocking driveways while they pick up to-go orders. You know, there's no reason, I mean, there is a reason for that. There's no parking on that street, but there's no reason to block resident driveways. In order to do that, they might have to walk a little bit further than just stopping in front of the restaurant.
Let me, let me talk to Jeff about this. I want to get my wrap my arms around how much of a problem we really have throughout town. And I mean, one thing that popped into my head is perhaps a program where. We could, where we don't necessarily have the overall need to put up do not block signs, do not do this or that signs, but if someone. Because they get inconvenienced now and then asks to put a sign up, is there a slight fee we can have them pay uh to have the sign put up? But let 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 me see what I can work through with Jeff.
I don't think they should pay a sign for some person who's disobeying the law and blocking a driveway.
I I understand what you're where where you're coming from. Uh, it's all about the 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 number of times that it happens. Uh, versus the location.
You know, and actually, I believe they have a do not block driveway right there by their driveway that they have already put up low.
They, if they put that up, what more can we put do other than try to step up the enforcement?
Yes.
And we don't do a very good job in enforcement. We don't give tickets out to anybody, you know, so people know that they can do pretty much what they want.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, this is not a good, this is not a good say situation.
Make the penalties stiffer. We got too many, what I call, social tickets being issued in Gig Harbor. Really, we really do. That is, if we make some examples of people, let's say, hey, if you do this, bad things are gonna happen to you. And uh, it's gonna take more than that lawyer with the shiny business card on the back of her suburban here every Wednesday for court. That says I'll get you off no matter what it is. Uh, and I'm dead serious, Carl. This is.
Well, I I completely understand, and we can take a look at our fine schedule, but I also know that the state. Uh, does have a limit as to how much you can um charge in fines for various infractions and. Whether or not this one is one where we can uh really sock and tool them or not, I don't know. I'd have to follow up on that, which I will.
That would, that would be great.
And can we give them a fine if it's not noticed that is a do not block area, you know, can we still give them a fine there?
That is a good question. I would argue that blocking any driveway, um, unless you're stuck in traffic. Is should be considered a violation. I mean, if you just stop and block a driveway, leave your car for a minute or two, come back. As far as I'm concerned, that's a violation, but I'd have to take a look at what the code reads.
And.
I mean, cars have been parked there before, and the police come, and they're walking up and down the street trying to figure out who owns those cars.
Right, well, and and I I I completely agree with with Councilmember Wook's concern over this. I do feel, though, that maybe this, you know, should have been an agenda. I don't want to get too far off of discussing this since it wasn't an an agenda item. But I do empathize with Councilmember Wook, and I do think that there is, something needs to be done, but I don't want to get too far off of. Uh, you know, what the meeting was.
Sure.
Posted for.
So should we have this be an agenda item at our next meeting?
Well, I I un- unless you have something further, I think that having the city administrator um. Call Bricks and let them know, hey, you know, there's some problems here. If you feel that there's something further other than that that you want to discuss, then yeah, bring. You know, bring it to mine or Jeff's attention and we'll get it on.
All right, I I'll just wait and let's see what um Mr. Pasecki.
We'll, we'll, we'll call Bricks, and Jeff and I will talk about this, and I want to look at it a little bit more. Uh, comprehensively, at least for the downtown waterfront area, because I know there's probably other parking area issues that are going on, but particularly in the Millville area.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll just say for the agenda for October eleventh, we're gonna have a very busy meeting. We've got the pros plan update. We've got the stormwater utility. Uh, revenue study, and I'm missing one, Mo.
It's the Hall Street vacation.
Oh, yes, Hall Street, right away vacation.
Yeah. Thanks, Mo.
Okay, uh, I I didn't mean to cut you off, Councilmember Wook, but I just.
I don't feel cut off.
Okay, all right. Okay, so now, uh, uh, now we're on to the uh capital improvement plan review.
Yes, thank you. Um, sorry, pull that open. First of all, any questions on that? Uh, Councilmember Wook, by the way, uh, made a very good point that um. We don't identify which ones have moved from tier to tier. The yellow is on there, but it only really identifies if it's had some adjustments done to it. Um, so I'm, Mo provided a summary table to identify which ones moved from tier to tier. Uh, if I was to color code those and show which ones moved from a tier to another tier, I think the legend would get kind of big and you'd have to be pretty good at. Reading legends and cross-checking to see what moved, but um, anyway.
I I thought the repositioning of uh the reprioritization thing that you sent was very good and help, very helpful to me.
Okay, good, good.
The um, um, just a comment on on this, we, we um. We've been through the tip list on the transportation side and tried to come up with what I call priorities and and things that we should be doing. And I've noticed there's a trend recently of some things floating in out of nowhere called, they weren't on the list, they were. Johnny come latelys on some of these things and uh, like Peacock Hill was one of them. Uh, where people are want to squeeze things into the budget next year. And uh, and I was, and that was the whole reason I've been pushing the tip, uh, hey. We we should have organized processes to set priorities instead of a November free-for-all. Um, deciding the the priorities on some of these things. So I I think, I I hate to say we should take a hard line on this, but I guess I am. Uh, called, hey, gang, that's what next year's all about. Uh, if you're not on the list, okay, you can get on the, and the tip list is a good one. Um, you can get in the two thousand twenty-two list, and besides, even if you got on the two thousand twenty-one, I should say the one. I'll take that back. The two, one, then in two thousand twenty-one is actually the twenty-two list, so it'd be the bank, it'd be the two thousand twenty-three list. Um, even if you got on this year's list, nothing's gonna happen next year because priorities are gonna push everything out. So, anyway, I think we had a um. Put forth a fairly clear message on that one, uh, called, hey, this this added starter thing in in uh. November, October, and November, that that game. November, October and November, that that game ended a couple of years ago with the invention of the tip.
Can I ask Mr. Pasecki to explain this to me because we had a conversation about the tip list? And uh, and and what I got from him pretty much was put everything on it that you're interested in. It doesn't have to be what you think you're gonna get done right away, but put it on there if you're interested in it. I thought he but he explained it better and I'm not sure that I, that's what I heard. I'm not sure that's what I heard.
That's exactly what you heard. I have, I have always looked at the tip as a list of every transportation project that you think you need to do, but you know you're not gonna get to it, but it certainly gives you a really good idea of where you need to, or or what what your issues are. By limiting things that go on the tip, in my opinion, you uh are aren't giving a full picture of what your transportation issues and problems are. Jeff may have a different opinion. I think Councilmember Franch has a different opinion, but that's the way I've always managed my tip.
Well, I I can, with all due respect, having that approach, you know, you get a different council, I mean, something that's that's been needed and been decided upon and is a community need. You get a different council on board and that could turn that, y- you could have those things changing every time the council changes.
While I I acknowledge that that can happen, that has not been my experience. Once you 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 set up your priorities, what often happens is, take for example, Des Moines, I our our tip had seventy-five or eighty uh projects on it. The city's bigger, I'll grant you that, but it's a lot of projects. The only thing the council really paid attention to was the top twenty to twenty-five. Everything else was, would slowly work its way up over the years, but it was on the list and if it was in the bottom two thirds, uh, it wasn't it wasn't sudden, you wouldn't take project number fifty and suddenly move it up to project number five. I I just didn't see that happen.
What what about projects that weren't even on the list coming into a capital discussion?
Sometimes, well, every year when you do your tip, you always look to see, do we have a a new project that we should consider for the tip? And quite frankly, the usually the answer was no, uh, because you've you've pretty much got all the major ones on there. Occasionally, something wild and crazy that you hadn't thought of would suddenly pop up uh and you would put it on your tip. For example, you might have a road that was in reasonably good shape and uh then there was a, a surface water problem that blew out the road. All of a sudden, that ends up on your tip, even though it wasn't going to be because the road was in good shape. I've had that happen. But it I don't look at it as much as as a free for all, Councilmember Heinz, as as you do. It's again, the top twenty to twenty-five projects are what the council would really pay attention to and the rest were just okay, we knew we, we know we have to do that someday, but right now it's not a priority, but we want to make sure we never forget about it, so it goes on the list.
I think the 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 free for all aspect is is one where we've got projects on the tip and those tips, tip items usually have some level of analysis behind it. For example, the traffic LOS studies, those types of things. They also have some first pass cost estimates associated with them and timing estimates. And when these things come in out of nowhere, that they've got none of that coming in, okay? And we're not gonna, and and the worst thing that happened is we say, oh, well, this one really has priority with that one and here's a new one and now we're gonna shift these things around to accommodate this this late come, okay? And I've seen that happen, okay? It's it's happened here. In fact, one of them is a, is a repeat of that.
I kinda is, you know, this was not a, I I believe this is a good discussion to have, believe me, uh, and I concur with, I probably concur more with Councilmember Heinz than Mr. Pasecki on this, but because you weren't here two years ago and we went through the budget process and it was. We're we're kinda getting, this discussion is kinda taking us away from our our uh our agenda here, so.
I agree.
Anyway.
So can we just get Jeff's opinion on the tip list while we are, why as we finish this up? I'd like to hear what Jeff has to say about this.
On the spot. So the, what I will say is that the tip should include everything that's in our comprehensive plan. So transportation element, active transportation plan that the council feels is right, should, that should be included in the tip. And then on top of that, other items that the council feels are priorities. It's up to the council and the majority of council to decide what those are. Because once they're on the tip, the there's, there's oftentimes requirements to have them on your tip before you receive state or federal grant funds. So to have the, to want to go after a project that's on your tip and to try and get state or federal grant funds, it's essentially a a nonstarter. But I have heard from this council in the past, not just in the past two years, but in the past decade or more, that they feel that why keep putting projects on the tip if we can't even get done what's already on the tip? And I've heard that from this council. But I understand exactly where uh Councilmember Luke and Mr. Pasecki wanna go and are suggesting that uh to put things on the list at least is a way to make sure that they're remembered and if there is any opportunity for grants to have it readily available instead of going back and amending your tip first.
Just, just to add to that, I I pushed for the tip prioritization of projects on the tip. That is.
And you should do that.
And and why, yeah, and 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 live by that called, we shouldn't be having a prioritization discussion with the budget. Okay, those priorities ought to be laid out and that's exactly what the tip was doing for us called, hey, here's the priorities, okay? Here's the projects, here's the priorities of those projects. That's what we should be doing, okay? Anytime we get into one of these, let's have a priority discussion along with the, as part of the budget. It just becomes a free for all. It really does, particularly if if your project, your favorite project wants to dis, it's off the list, isn't even on the list, wants to displace one in a position that is on the list, then it becomes a real.
And I agree with you, Councilmember Heinz, that the tip should be separate from the budget. Tip is your priorities, prioritizing transportation projects and things that should be done. And I like the fact that that is generally done in the late spring, early summer, adopted by July one, which I think is by law, correct if I'm wrong, Jeff.
It is by law to meet the state requirements because.
And then when it comes to budget time, you're, all you're doing is saying, how much funding do we have, what grants can we go after? And we look at the priorities, priorities in the tip and say, this is what we're going to do.
So uh so Jeff, uh, I I, Councilmember Luke was describing, I I, has there been some projects that have shifted from tier to tier?
Yes, yes, there have.
Can you give me a brief overview of that?
Mo, do you, are you able to pull up that table that you prepared? Mo prepared a table? So what you're seeing is as of the last distribution of the CIP schedules, the tier is the, in, and the project is on the tier under which it was listed and on the right column, it identifies where it came from. Prentice Fenimore was not on the CIP tiers, but it was in the approved twenty twenty-one budget. So that's why it was, it was, yeah.
Can you zoom that? I'm trying to do my more options, but I'm not having too much luck here.
Better?
That's a little too big.
Okay. Sorry. That's the next size down.
Okay, now can you scroll it over to the left, please?
Uh, Mo can't because it's, Mo, well, actually, Mo, would you mind on the top right next to the X hitting the minimize button, not all the way down, the to double box, yeah? See if that helps.
And then let me.
That might help, Mr. Councilmember Franch. There, perfect.
So what what is, what has moved?
All of these projects that you see have moved. Project and sixty-four is the number in the the MS project schedule. So Prentice Fenimore has been added to tier one. There, that's good, Mo. So Prentice Fenimore project has been added to tier one.
How was that added? What, what, where did that get it? Who decided to add it?
I did because we're starting on it. It was in the twenty twenty-one budget. And it was, it was forgotten when we created the tiers of CIP schedules. It should have been in tier two or tier three and somehow it was forgotten. And so it should have been on the tiers, but wasn't, but it's, it's not. Yeah.
Okay, then what about the rest of these?
Wastewater Treatment Plant Digestor upgrades, it was moved from tier two onto tier one because we're now actively working on it. Same thing with the utility rate studies. We're now actively working on it. The city council hasn't seen it and the public works committee hasn't seen it yet, but staff and the consultants are actively working on it. And then same thing with tier two projects. Sportsman Complex was moved from tier three up to tier two because we're, it's getting close to a point where we're gonna start working on it, as is the Donkey Creek Daylighting Project.
The Donkey Creek Daylighting Project, Bill, that's the conceptual design project, right?
Correct, thirty-five thousand dollars or thirty thousand dollars or something for conceptual design and permitting layout.
Well, yeah, yeah, okay, uh, you know, that is a, that's a boondoggle project in and of itself. And uh, you know, to to get into spending millions of dollars on that, I I think uh if the state's gonna uh start mandating all these uh I know this isn't a culvert project, but uh that that is a that's a project that that you talk to the people that that run that hatchery down there, that's a project that does not need to get done to enhance uh salmon at Donkey Creek, so.
Yeah, that's, that's not, I mean, that that, I I appreciate and respect their opinion. The state and the federal government are telling us we have to do something like this for a culvert replacement project, so we are preparing to do that.
And with that telling us we have to, better come a whole bunch of money to pay for it.
Yes.
Well, you know.
I I get that it's taxpayer money, but.
Well, I I I I think that there needs to be some, um, you know, and I don't know, did the state, I I believe that they were talking about backfilling some of these onerous bet culvert regulations that came in. Did the state come up with more money that they were gonna start trying to distribute to local jurisdictions to to uh do some of these culvert replacements?
The the federal government is working on that at this point.
Yeah, we actually met with uh our congressman several weeks ago and he was talking about a bill that would have, I don't know how much, but it's uh funding for these type of projects. And he was trying to get a handle on which ones were ideal uh for him to uh support and try to get funding for.
All right, thank you. It's, it's ridiculous.
Tier three did not have anything added to it. Tier four had the Masonic Lodge Visioning and Crest Creek Park Visioning added to it. It came from tier two. As you've probably heard the mayor say, he understands and is accepting that this is not going to happen anytime soon, so we moved that into tier four. So those.
Could you scroll that screen up a little bit, please? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay, um, then I'll go ahead and go through the um CIP schedules themselves and so Mo, if you'll stop sharing your screen. Thank you. Okay, so I'm just gonna say the titles really, and if you have questions, please interrupt me and let me know. But we've got the end boat brick house rehabilitation, that's almost done. End boat marine railway carriages, uh, we're receiving the last shipments and that will be completed based on the timeline of the volunteers to boat shop. Uh, Community Paddler's Dock, um, we're waiting on submittals from the contractor right now. Uh, then will be under construction once we get all of those submittals approved. But a lot of the construction is actually to take place offsite and it'll be a limited amount of construction, very narrow timeframe of when the contractor is actually out in the water in front of this site. Austin Honoring Symbol Artwork, um, there's the schedule we see as of today. Though I even need to change that a little bit, we have not advertised small works roster. We're going through consultation with the cultural resources people and uh have to adjust the schedule based off of some findings and more meetings to come after that. Uh, human powered watercraft storage, uh, that's proceeding, though we pushed that off a little bit. We're trying to coincide the fabrication installation along with the completion of the Community Paddler's Dock. Doesn't have to be that way, but because of staff limitations, we're just trying to have those move forward at the same time.
Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Uh, as a related note on that, where are we at with the fee schedule?
Uh, same, same as the fabrication installation, where I'm, I've got that on my to-do list, but because of other conflicting priorities, I'm holding off on doing anything further, but I need to finalize the terms and conditions with the mayor and then also prepare a draft fee schedule to bring forward to council. I anticipate we're gonna have that draft fee scheduled before council uh this fall.
Thank you.
Yep. Uh, and Sage Park Advanced Mitigation, um, been holding off on that a little bit. We've adjusted the schedule, pushed it out a little bit because of the uh waiting for response back from federal agencies and also from state fish and wildlife. There's the pros plan update. You'll hear more about that next meeting. Uh, HVAC assessment, again, due to other conflicting priorities, that's been pushed off a little bit to get the consultant. We'd hoped to have the consultant on board this spring, but that didn't happen, so. Same thing with building access control, that's being pushed off so we can put together a bid package, but it takes coordination between IT, HR and public works to move that forward. Pedestrian crosswalk improvements, uh, as you know, that's been substantially complete. Minor things that need to be finished to make it physical complete and then we'll do construction closeout at that point. Yeah, I have to say the uh, just hearing from Kyle and Jake and Trent, contractor was a very good contractor to work with. First time we worked with a contractor, but we were very pleased with uh how responsive and timely they were with their project and they just made it happen, so.
That's great and our citizens are really happy about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Public Works Operations Center, uh, just received yesterday, maybe it was today, yesterday, the uh final designs permitting uh applications for that. We need to review it one more time and then we can submit those designs for permit approvals. Uh, it's in the budget to construct and uh and put all of the furniture in next year. Uh, Stinson overlay and intersection improvements, uh, still just waiting on luminaires and a couple other minor items to finish that project, but all intents and purposes, it's done. Uh, Harborview Stinson, you've all been very aware of the progress on that. Uh, no changes to the schedule at this point. Thirty-eighth Avenue improvements, uh, we're proceeding with construction, finishing those. The construction on this one actually is gonna be pushed out now. Um, we're waiting on handrails fabrication and street light pole fabrication and that's, I've been told the street light poles may not be here until toward the end of this year, so.
On that project, Jeff, um, what is going on with the county's portion of that two blocks?
Good question. Uh, Trent looked into that this morning when we were talking about it and that they have it in their CIP schedule to start design next year.
That. A- anyway, all right.
Burnham Half Street Improvements, that is proceeding. We hope to have design and permitting completed. Well, the permitting will be, or will be submitted before the end of this year. I'm not, well, we won't hear back from. Well, the permitting will be, will be submitted before the end of this year, I'm not, well, we won't hear back from all the agencies. But we will have that and we'll finalize design and get ready to go out to bid next year.
How close to does, how close is it, where are you at on the design percentage?
I, Mo, maybe you can remember this morning, I, I thought we were past 30%, but not yet to 60%. I think is where we are.
So you still have no idea of the cost?
No, we have a cost update and that cost update was provided in the draft budget, you will see. I don't have it off the top of my head, but it was, it was provided in the, in the draft budget.
Um, Jeff, according to the matrix, the CIP matrix, it says, um, it was one of the bullets at the top, 30% design review comments. Were provided to the consultant the week of July 19th. And we just received the preliminary cost estimate late August of this year.
Yep, so we're, so we, we've moved in mid-July, we were at 30%. So by probably October, I think it is, we'll be at 60%.
Can you give me an idea of the, did the price go up?
Uh, yeah, just let me pause my, let me stop my screen for a second here. It did, let me pull up the draft budget for this.
Everything always goes up, nothing comes down.
Yeah. Okay, I'm looking just a second. Uh, streets. Streets division capital. Burnham Drive improvements for the, for the. Roadway project itself, $2.2 million.
Well, that's about the same then, 2.1 is what we were.
That's where we're at, yeah.
Okay. And then the cul, well, the culverts, culverts similar, let me, let me scroll down to the culvert here. Storm Division. 2.68 million for the culvert, so that has gone up.
Two point, we were at 850,000.
No, we're at 1.3 million.
That was more.
Eight, 850,000 was just the construction, didn't include, did not design and permitting.
Yeah, so it's gone up to what?
2.68 million, it's doubled in price.
Do we know why?
Likely due to the actual design of the project and after researching the geotechnical information. We have a better idea of what the actual structure needs to look like. We start off by trying to have the least expensive type of structure in there. But because of a lot of factors, sometimes we have to go to the more expensive but stronger structure.
Thank you.
I, I have to say, staff has received direction constantly to try and minimize prices wherever possible. So we try and come to council with the lowest prices. And I know that this is the reaction we get when we do that and we come back and we say, well, it's, we had hoped it would be the lowest possible. Price possible, but it's not, so.
Well, I, I, I'll be looking at that very closely. I can hardly wait to see that design. Okay, thank you.
Okay, ADA self, self evaluation transition plan, and that's going to be before public works committee in November. We're in the process of preparing that, it's going to be the bare minimum we're required to develop to say that we're consistent. But we have to get that by the, done by the end of this year. And right now we're on track to do that.
Good.
Here's apprentice avenue, Fennemore Street, Halflet Fringe improvements, consultant's contract will hopefully be before council at the. September 27th meeting, so next council meeting. And then consultant's going to be under a lot of pressure, but Trent says they're going to put the pressure on the consultant to get preliminary design and cost estimate completed by the end of this year. Kenwood Emergency Intertie, meeting with water purveyors, I believe it's next week to talk about this more. But hope to get through design this year and then put it out to bid. Possibly awarded the council, the first council meeting in December. Water comp plan and lift station six, station six is progressing, just trying to get some of the finer details from the contractor to move forward. Insurance requirements is what it is, so. And lift station 12, we're out to bid and, and we'll be opening bids this Thursday. And we'll have a better idea of what that will cost by this Thursday.
Where is 12?
12 is at the intersection of Burnham Drive and Wood Hill Drive, right on the east side of Highway 16, next to Dave Morris's real estate building. And then there's the Murphy's Landing Navigation Channel Agreement, we've gone through the agreement, we're, got our consultant selected. And we're just working with Murphy's Landing to finalize some of the. Items and we're going to be in the middle of design and permitting after that. Treatment plant digester upgrades, that's something that's been moved on here, planning on doing that. This will help us with our nutrient removal. But we think we can do that with fairly short timeframe, because a lot of it's just purchasing and installing new blowers. Which will help improve the treatment plant process.
So is this, weren't we expecting some new regulations to come down from the state with regarding to protein? Is that what this is about?
That's, yes, that's what this is about, this is our first response, we have to do something and we hope that this will be enough to get us by in the short term.
Doesn't this deal with nitrogen, Joe?
Yes, it's the nitrogen, general nutrient permit on nitrogen.
Thank you.
Uh, there's the Burnham Drive, Ninety Sixth Street culvert project we were just referring to, stormwater utility revenue study. In the middle of that, as we said, we've got our public open house on the 15th and 16th. And then we will be in front of the public works committee meeting at their November meeting, or sorry, October meeting. And then in front of council for hopefully adoption by mid-November. Okay, and then utility rate studies, again, that moved on to this tier. Because we're in the process of actually doing a bunch of work with Ashley Emery in the background. And we'll have something for the public works committee in November. Okay, so that's tier one, I'm going to go through tier two and tier three, it's going to be quick because those are fairly. Brief, so, sorry, let me pull that back up, I closed that folder. Tier two. Okay, native vegetation plantings, just pushing that out to be moralistic when we can actually plant those, put those plants in the ground. Sports complex phase one B. No real time changes to that, but we are going to be getting that going soon. Generator replacement, that's just timing wise for capacity for staff to, at the treatment plant to get that done. And the Donkey Creek Daylighting, we just talked about that, that's moving on from a tier three project to a tier two project because it's coming up. And that's it, it's our one page for tier two. And now tier three. That's two pages. Okay, here's tier three, there's the bow visitor center HVAC re-roof, re-insulate. That's still scheduled, no changes to begin next year. You'll see it next year's budget, right turn lane, we'll watch it drive, that was moved out and it will be in next year's budget also. Harbor History Museum, oh. Yeah, I need to look at that actually, I'll have to double check that on Harbor History Museum driveway revisions, that's something that just we haven't been able to get to with staff time. It's supposed to be in-house design, in-house construction. So we've moved that out, be able to accommodate that. Mid-block crosswalk systems at 50th Street and Soundview. That's in the current budget and carried over into 2022, so ideally that's in-house design and in-house construction.
Are those, those must be two separate projects, right? I mean, I don't, where's 50th Street on Soundview?
You want, no, it's, no, you're right, there's two separate projects, there accounts member, yep.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, 50th Street near Veterans Memorial Park and Soundview near Hunt.
Yep.
That might have been cut off, but I'll fix that. Sports Complex Water Main, that's dependent on the design of phase one B, I should probably move that one out even further. Because it should coincide with design for phase one B. Lift station one rehabilitation, that was in this year's budget and has been moved out and carried over into next year's budget. And marine outfall maintenance still moved up. Into next year. Okay, and then lastly is tier four. Okay, scansy net shed structural repairs and re-roofing, we've had discussions on that before. There's some Sonic Lodge visiting and Crescent Creek Park visiting, that's been moved out from tier one to tier four. Commercial fishing home port conceptual design has been moved out to middle to end of 2022. And Christian Trail Connection, however you drive, no changes, but into this year, first part of next year for consultant selection and design. And annual pavement maintenance, we talked about that one earlier this year, but that one's scheduled to start again in the end of this year, first part of next year. There's one more page. Berries crosswalk installation, that's the public safety improvement fund that's in the budget. Intent is to have the public works committee develop the project list and proceed forward with conceptual design and permitting. Oh, there's a sports complex water main again, huh, I didn't take that off, I gotta get that fixed.
It only began one tier, Jeff.
Yeah. Trying to play both sides of the fence. Uh, Cinsin Avenue and Slip Linings and the Storm Slip Linings, two projects to suit two separate funds. Again, we want that to be in-house design, we hope to have the capacity to do that next year and then the public work standards update for next year. And one more page, oh, on-street parking code and development.
So everything that you're working on is in the, is on these lists, right?
Everything that is not just a simple, yeah, everything that's a capital project, it is, unless there's a simple, just minor fix.
So nothing is coming, nothing is holding up any of these capital projects because of anything else?
I would say no, the capital projects that have the highest priority are the ones that are holding up the other ones. It's just, there's some, some things that consistently have one more thing we need to do or a new item we need to address. And then we stop everything and try and get those addressed.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, it's a lot, we go through this with staff and we go through our CIP matrix that was Friday to council last Friday. And that's, that's a lot, there's a lot going on, we have never had this level. And as you know, our staffing levels, numbers wise have not increased. We're now fully staffed, but it's, it's a lot to do.
How, are you asking for, do we need more staff for in them and then is that going to come in the new budget?
It will, you'll see that new budget, yep.
And how many more staff members do we need, do we know?
Well, give away the whole budget here, but.
Oh, okay, you don't have to.
For engineering, we're asking for one more staff person, one more engineer.
Okay, that's not, that's not much, I don't think, we need. Cause I know, it seems to me that everybody at the city is hugely busy. And we, we certainly don't want to wear people out, I don't think. As we get our projects done, because they seem to be getting done, so thank you, this is great information for me.
Yep.
Sneak previews of coming attractions, the, the budget discussion will be coming up. And one item that's high on the priority list from the tip. Is the metering up at the Burnham, Borgon, Kennerwood Roundabout. That thing is about to go critical, I think. The ending of the pandemic restraints and people going back to work and the opening of the school up there. And a few other things have just tied that thing up, I mean, we're, we're. We got a break with the pandemic, it gave us about a year and a half delay, okay? That delay is now over and once again, the traffic backs all the way up the hill. I'm talking about the people coming down Borgon from on top of the hill there, past Starbucks going down. Now the traffic again from roughly three o'clock, been three to 4:30, I've been through there. And it's backing all the way up into the upper roundabout now, and, and it just goes into gridlock, okay? Now, the, the work downtown has aggravated that, no doubt, okay? No question about that, but when you look at what's happened with the school. And we haven't built the Harbor Hill Shopping Center. And we haven't built the sports complex yet, you can just start adding these things up and saying, oh my gosh, this is a bit, this is huge, okay? This thing's about to go into gridlock, okay, at some point in the future. So I think we gotta kick off at least the, the studies on this thing. How do you actually pull off a roundabout metering project? I'm sure there's Wash Dot perfection there and some other things that are involved. But I think we're, we're to the point now where we gotta, we gotta start moving on it.
Well, I'll just say that. The roundabout metering project is in the draft 2022 budget.
Yep.
It, it is a $1.5 million project with 1.1 million coming from the federal government. And other funds coming from the TBD, the TIF and the HBZ. Wash Dot has done this exact same type of roundabout metering in Richland a few years ago. So they have a lot of things that we can learn from that. And so we will be ready to do that. Depending on council's priorities, either with or without federal grant funding.
Okay, okay, yeah, I'll, I'll be just pushing, to, to me, it's, it's big, it's really big. And the future looks darker as we go, as we keep adding more and more volume on.
So where is the metering going to happen?
Well, I don't want to get in too much to this.
Okay, all right.
We're at 4:30, we're at 4:30 here now, so, yeah.
If you prefer not to answer, that's okay.
Well, I, maybe, maybe I can just email you council member, whoop, the. There's a YouTube video that Wash Dot put on of the Richland Roundabout Metering, it's very similar to what they have, similar issues.
Okay, okay, that's, that's fine, I, I guess I just thought it was going to be having to do with the overpass coming from one side of Burnham to the other side of Burnham.
That, that's the meter, the, the single meter that's proposed is on Burnham Drive southbound. On the, coming, for the leg coming off the overpass into the big roundabout.
So, so how does that help with Borgon?
Well, that's a good question, I mean, there's traffic theory behind it and that's where I didn't want to get into it necessarily. But there's traffic theory behind it about whether or not, how it's going, it's going to create gaps. What Wash Dot does and looks at is how it's going to affect their off-ramp. And that's not necessary, that's two legs after, Borgon is two legs after their off-ramp. But that's what Wash Dot is concerned about, is their off-ramp. If we're concerned about Borgon, we may have a different approach, but that's where we need to get into the design and permitting to see, to model, to see if there is, what the effect is going to be.
Okay, I would like to look at that YouTube if you'd send it to me, thank you.
Yes, could you send it to us all, please?
I'll send it to you all, but again, please be aware, the intent of that roundabout metering that they're proposing. And the intent of the original roundabout metering that was proposed by the city of Gig Harbor for this roundabout. I want to say it was 10 years ago. Was to limit the queuing of traffic in the off-ramp from Highway 16. So we didn't have high-speed rear-end collisions coming off the highway. It was not intended to reduce the queuing length of Borgon Boulevard.
Well, and that's a problem, we need to reassess that.
Well, that's why there's more money in this project, originally this project was $750,000, now it's 1.5 million.
And that's the reason, by the way, I'm, I'm pushing for at least analysis next year.
Exactly.
By the way, there is no Plan B associated with this issue, none.
Well, there is, it's just very expensive. Well, there is, it's just very expensive.
Oh, yeah, right, but, but they, they are.
We, we have.
Years ago with that expense.
We have, we have an alternative to, to this issue that takes out the roundabouts and puts in what I call a single point urban interchange.
Yeah, which, which should have been done in the first place, but that's a separate story.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so, um, since it's, we're kinda, you know, we're been kinda straying away from things. So Mo, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment.
I don't see anybody that's, uh, attending, so I'm assuming there's no pu, public comment gonna come from that.
Correct.
So, uh, the next, uh, announcement upcoming meetings is, uh, our next meeting is October twelfth. And, uh, if there's nothing further, uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Let's do adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay, or saying, opposed. All right.
Jimmy wants to go on forever.
He wants to go forever.
Jimmy and I will leave now. Thank, thank you all.
Bye, everybody, thank you.
Thank you.